I'd like to call this September 26, 2024 Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Onagostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Ms. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stavcek?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our strategic priorities, our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan, which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. There are four strategic priorities to the plan: transforming teaching and learning, aligning staff and resources, cultivating culture and climate, and leveraging funding and facilities. And all the decisions we make are measured by those goals. If I understand it correctly, we do not have OSBA student achievement recognition today, so we will move on. Public comment, I do not have any slips, and I do not see anyone burning to make a public comment. Approval of minutes, this is part of our consent calendar, motion to approve the minutes of the September 12, 2024 work session. All district video and audio recordings are a permanent part of the minutes. And next, we come to Board of Education discussion. I will start with the motion, be it resolved that the Strongsville City School Board of Education approves the levy implication plan as presented. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane, any discussion? George, if we can get the PDF presentation on the screen? And so the implications, because it is a levy vote, the levy can pass or fail. If the levy passes, we have discussed before, being in one of the strongest financial positions we've been in as a school district, and as part of that, it would be reasonable and pragmatic to look at some of the expenditures that we have eliminated in our history that traditionally school districts pay for. Traditionally, school districts have that as part of their mission. And so as an example, we would be in a position to eliminate athletic fees, and the two that we would eliminate are pay-to-participate fees and trainer fees. Although those have been around for a number of years in Strongsville, they have not been a long time charge or fee. They were instituted many years ago when the district was in severe financial distress, and it was a choice between either not having the activities or figuring out a way to cobble together the funds to pay for them. So pay-to-participate fees and trainer fees would be eliminated if Issue 53 earns the support of the voting public. We would also be able to eliminate selected student fees. These would be consumables, tech fees, physical education and lab fees, and other course-related mandatory fees. This would affect both elementary and secondary school levels. And again, historically, these are fees that were not charged to our parents for their students' education. And then the last one would be the elimination of tuition for full-day kindergarten. There is a caveat to that, and we do not have the space for everybody that we anticipate would want to take advantage of full-day kindergarten. We have had many conversations about full-day kindergarten and the value and the benefit, and so we've, as a district, have wanted to offer that to our parents, so that if they choose to send their children to full-day kindergarten, they have the ability to do that. Previously, we've been charging the second-half-day tuition, and again, that was a decision to make the budget work. If Issue 53 does pass, we would be in a position to eliminate that tuition for the second day. Ultimately, that would benefit our students, I think, the most. Full-day kindergarten is easily something that starts our kindergarteners, starts our youngest students on the right step, on the right first step for their educational journey. So I think they would benefit from this the most, but obviously, the burden to our parents would be eliminated. So I think that's a reasonable and good and pragmatic thing. Before I move on to the negative side of the ledger, are there any other questions or comments?
I do have one question, Cameron. We would still maintain some half-day kindergarten. That question was brought to me by a community member.
Correct. So by law, we have to offer a half-day option, so yes, we would still offer something.
Any other? So moving to the other side of the ledger.
Mr. Miko, for clarification, this is beginning next school year, correct?
Correct. Thank you for that clarification. This would begin with the 25-26 school year. So what happens if Issue 53 fails? So we have spent an inordinate amount of time, valuable amount of time, but many hours prior to board meetings and during board meetings discussing our budget, discussing the consequences of our budget, but they've always been, I think, in a dollars-and-cents fashion. They've always been bringing up our five-year forecast, bringing up our cash reserve policy, et cetera. It's always been, what are the dollars and the cents and how we've evaluated it? This document puts it very clearly for ourselves and our public, what would happen if Issue 53 fails. As a board, we are obligated to have a balanced budget. By law, we can't just say, hey, we'll worry about it tomorrow. The decisions we would have to make as a board would be severe, and they're outlined here. And they're almost a converse or the other side of the coin of what we've been doing for at least the past five years, to not only have a good school district, but to have a school district that strives for and invests in continuous improvement and excellence. And so just to read through these, they're kind of grouped. Area of focus is extracurriculars, and under that, we would freeze or reduce general fund support of the athletic budget. There would be a reduction of athletic, non-athletic, and music supplemental contracts, and there would be an increase in pay-to-participate by $50, and instrumental rental fees by $20. And it's almost the other side of the coin compared to what we would do if Issue 53 passes. Moving on to the area of focus that we're calling opportunities, it would be a reduction of course offerings. It would be an elimination of club, group, and incentive field trips, and it would be a freeze on the implementation of future programming or opportunities. And some of the examples are the recording lab, esports, et cetera. Under the area of focus for services and supports, we would increase tuition for preschool by $10 a month. We would increase elementary class caps to 30 for grades two and three. Currently, those are limited to 25.
Correct.
We would elimination of transportation services for grades 11 and 12, and we would increase the district limits from one mile to one and a half miles for grades K through 10, which is a long way of saying more students would have to figure out how to get to school on their own. There would be a reduction of building budgets by 15%, which would be the elimination of instrument replacement funds. It would be cost-neutral for summer learning, and that would be a reduction of department budget line items. So what are those examples? Tech infrastructure, Chromebooks, software, curriculum textbooks, business services, equipment and software, furniture repairs and maintenance. Considering staff development, failure of Issue 53 would mean the reduction of internal, external staff, general fund, professional development. And then there's a host of activities under staff reorganization. Staff reorganization is a nice way of saying, doing more or doing the same with much less. It would be an elimination of teacher and administrative positions. It would be an elimination of support staff and leadership positions. It would be an elimination or reduction of support staff hours and days. It would be an elimination or reduction of stipend positions. It would be an elimination or reduction of permanent substitutes, and it would be an elimination or reduction of extended days. In other words, it would be an elimination, in my opinion, of all the things that we are certainly proud of and that we can point to that have been the reason we have been excellent for the past five years, and not just resting on our laurels, but always looking forward to how can we be better? Any other comments or discussions on this? The last thing I want to share with the public is that it is two sides of the coin. We are at, to be trite, a crossroads. We are in a position where we can decide to continue the progress, continue the positive momentum, or we can decide to move backwards. I'm not going to tell anyone how to vote. What I do want to impress on the community is, this is our best effort to explain what your decision is. This is our best effort to give you the facts, so that as a voter, you can analyze what happens if Issue 53 passes, and what happens if Issue 53 fails. Certainly, from an emotional standpoint, we don't want to see Issue 53 fail, but ultimately, that's up to the voter. We want to earn their trust. We want to earn their investment, but it is up to the voter, and we are legally prescribed that we're not allowed to tell you how to vote. We are allowed to tell you the facts, and these are the facts. I don't want anyone to think that we are trying to incentivize or bribe or condition anyone on how they should vote, but we do want the public to have the facts, and we want them to be clear. And that's why we've spent the time delineating this. The last thing I would want to share is that the areas of reduction and the amounts, they would start at approximately $3 to $4 million in year one.
Three to three and a half, George.
Three to three and a half.
Three to three and a half million dollars in year one, and they would continue to grow each year. So I don't want anyone to think, oh, we can digest that one-time cut. That one-time cut is for one year, and then we would have to come back in year two and do this process all over again. So it's not just a one-year fix.
It's cumulative, so that $3 million in year one.
Can you expound on that, George?
Yeah, so, for example, I put the chart on the board, and I updated the forecast based on the budget presentation tonight, so the number's a little different than the last one, but bottom line's close. So year one reductions would be beginning of fiscal year '26, so if we do $3 million of reductions in 2026, that $3 million carries every year. Then the next fiscal year is fiscal year '27, so we would need to do another $3.5 million reductions. So cumulatively, now we're at $6.5. And that $6.5 now carries for moving forward. The following year, we would need to do another $3 million, so now we're at $9.5 cumulative, and so on. And by doing that through the life of the five-year forecast, it would get us to our, we would be def-spending, we'd be still def-spending, we would be bringing down our cash balance to the fifth-year forecast, to our cash balance of the 90 days cash on hand.
Thank you, George. I've said everything I wanted to say. Any other comments? George, would you please take the role?
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
The motion carries, and I know I don't have to instruct Dan, but we will want to get this out to the public in as many ways and as widely as possible. Next on our discussion is treasurer's report. George, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight, most of them dealing around the annual budget. The first one is the fiscal report for month-end August 31, 2024. The report is attached as the exhibit. I'm not going to go over that as I'm going to go over the budget presentation in a few items. The next item is SCF grant approval. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the following grants from the Strongsville Education Foundation be approved for fiscal year '25. We have two. The first one is, they're both for Whitney Elementary Schools. One is a classroom rug for a teacher for a classroom, I believe it's kindergarten, for $325.07, and then the other is for Whitney Music, for ukuleles, for $795. New funds for fiscal year '25. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the following new funds be approved for fiscal year '25. There are three student activity funds. The first one is a district-managed student activity club for the middle school drama club. That's a new club where the Strongsville Community-
Orchestra?
Theater. Theater, I'm sorry. The Strongsville Community Theater is donating $10,000 to the district to get this program started. I believe we posted for a supplemental position for someone to oversee that, but we're starting the fund up, so we have place for the funds to go, and once an advisor is named, we'll have control of that activities fund. The next one is, they're both high school-related. They're student-managed activity funds, and they're related to honor society. The one's the Psi Alpha Honor Society, and then the other one is the Tri-M Honor Society, which is related to music and choir. The next item is all the student activity program budgets and purposes and goals for fiscal year '25. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the student activity program budgets, purposes, and goals for fiscal year '25 be approved for the exhibit. This is similar to the one we did for June 30 to start the fiscal year. This has been updated for the new activity groups that were presented in the previous item, plus one adjustment for the ASAP program at the high school. Just doing this again due to the annual budget being adopted this month. And finally, the permanent appropriations. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the permanent appropriations for fiscal year '25 be approved. I did put my annual presentation together. It is a lot of slides. I'm not going to go through all of them unless anyone wants me to, but I'm just going to touch on some high points. The slides are there for more for a reference point. I like to post them on the website, too, and just to have them there. So starting off, estimated resources. This is all of our funds for the school year. We have our general fund, which is our main operating fund, estimated revenues for the year of $87 million, beginning unencumbered ballots of $49 million for total resources of $136 throughout the year. Then our special revenue funds. These are all mostly local, state, and federal grant awards, plus our two district-managed and student-managed activity funds, our debt service funds. Then our next grouping is our capital projects funds, our enterprise funds, which is our food service and uniform school supplies. The O9 is the uniform school supplies. Those are where the student fees go into, and the consumables are paid out. We have our internal service funds, which are mainly our self-insurance, termination benefit funds, and a district agency fund, which is an O22 fund that the OSHA tournaments are run through. So for estimated resources for the year, $116,451,112. And then same thing with the appropriations. Our general operating budget, for the general fund, $92.2 million with prior carryover encumbrances of 1.8, for a total appropriation of $93.9 million. And then with all the remaining funds, the total annual appropriation is $121,000.9 with the carryover encumbrances of 4.1 for a total appropriation of about $126 million. And then kind of moving on to a budget forecast. What I like to do when I do the annual budget is, all right, we budgeted the amounts. How does it play into the five-year forecast with that? So kind of do a budget forecast. This will be updated again in November. This budget forecast, I don't need to submit to ODE, not until November, so in November, we'll do a new five-year forecast and submit it to ODE by their filing deadline, and at that time, we'll know the outcome of the elections, and we'll be able to incorporate the levy implications either way of the outcome of levy. And these projections here do not include any of those levy implications at this time. So purpose of the forecast, one is to engage the local Board of Education and community in the long-range planning and discussion of the financial issues facing the district, serve as a basis for determining the school's ability to issue a 412 certificate, and to provide a method to the Department of Education and other states to identify school districts with potential financial problems. And then the forecast methodology, this forecast is prepared based upon historical trends and current factors. This information is then extrapolated into estimates for subsequent years. The forecast variables can change multiple times throughout the fiscal year, and while cash flow monitoring helps to identify unexpected variances, no process guaranteed. The intent is to provide the district's financial trend over time and a roadmap for decisions aimed at encouraging financial sustainability and stability. Again, we have our major assumptions. I'm just going to go through the major assumptions for the revenues and expenditures, and then just get to the summary pages. The collection rate, the forecast assumes a 99.47 collection rate. We were able to get the current year collections as those ended in August. We got our final settlement for the calendar year. The good news is our gross collection rate did go up by percent, and as that goes up by a percent, it represents close to $700,000 to $800,000 of revenue, so that had a positive impact to the forecast. We were looking at the three-year average, and that increased, so the new three-year average is what's based on the forecast moving forward. Also, we've been talking a lot about this, the evaluations. We had the reappraisal this year. In May, we had forecasted a 27% increase. The actual increase was 28.39 for residential property and 9.5 for commercial property. And then three years following this reappraisal, there's a tri-annual update, and there's a 10% increase factored in the tri-annual update in three years. And what does that mean to tax rates? This is a slide that I've put in a few presentations ago, which I kind of like showing, is as values increase, the effective rate decreases for the voted levies to maintain the original dollar amounts that they were voted on at that time. So as values go up, the effective rates go down, and as we'll see in a later slide, they can only go down cumulatively to a 20-mill floor, and we're beginning to start approaching that floor. This just shows to that trend. On the left side, those are values going up. On the right side, those are the effective rates going down. In 2019, where there was the increase, that was for the 2019 levy that came on. In 2024, we're showing the 30% drop. That's a combination of the reappraisal dropping the effective rates, and then also, the forecast at this point assumes that the renewals are already expired, so it's not in the forecast. So now with this Issue 53, I have to put it on the bottom as a new pending levy. So that shows that without the levy in there. And then this is for the projected years. So in 2027, there's the tri-annual update. So as you'll see in 2027, on the left-hand side, an increase of 10%. On the right side, the effective rate's dropping by 7%. And then this graph shows how close we're getting to the 20-mill floor. The green top graph is, or the green top line is the voted millage. We're on 80 mils. The gray in the middle, that's the effective rates, and then the gold dotted line is a 20-mill floor. You'll see in '23 to '24, the drop. That's a combination of the renewal levy coming off, the 5.9, and plus the increase in valuations that decreases the effective rates. So without this, without the levy, the effective rate is 25.02 mils. If Issue 53 would pass, then it would be around 28, 29 mils. In tax year '23, with a 10% increase, assuming this levy does not pass, we'll be at 23 mils, and then we'll also, at that same time, we'll also have the other renewal on the books. So if that fills, we'll be pretty close to the floor, if not at the floor. And then once a district hits the 20-mill floor, then house bill 920 is no longer in play for any valuation increases. The first bullet point, I just still have it in there because the first year, the historical forecast still has the impact for the reevaluation of the mall and the refund, so that's there for the assumptions. And then, as we stated, the 2019 levy has expired, so it's not showing in the tax revenues. Due to the expiration of this levy, the Board of Education has voted to place a 4.9-mill continuous levy on the November ballot. If approved, by the community, collections will begin in January of '25, so it would begin this school year. And then our other renewal levy, which was renewed in 2021, it is set to expire in tax year 2026, and collections will continue through 2027. We can begin putting it on the ballot in November of 2026. And state funding, we're funded based on the current biennial. We're at the final year of the current biennium, so in the spring, we'll be having the conversations with the state budget. So we'll see how that goes during the spring. With the state budget, we have our restricted funds. We do receive money for student success and wellness of $229,000, career tech and ELL for $45,000, disadvantaged people aid of $50,000, gifted for $162,000. And this year, all of our elementary teachers, I think it's in high school or just elementary, in high school have to go through the science of reading training, and they receive a $1,200 stipend or a $400 stipend, depending on their subject level matter. We pay it and get reimbursed by the state, so that $300,000 is the estimated reimbursement from the state. So in both cases, salaries increased by $300,000, and revenues, in this case, increased by $300,000. What changed between the May forecast and the September forecast? Total changes in operating revenue were about $1.6 million. General property tax went up due to the increase in collection rate, the gross collection rate, increased by a percent. Unrestricted grant aid, the state funding, estimated to receive about another $100,000 for our transportation numbers. Restrictive grant aid, $300,000 for the science of reading. And then operating, other operating revenues, mainly interest income, kind of looking where we finished this year, increased the interest revenues a little bit based on how we finished this year, but also factoring in any projected rate cuts that we may receive. So as we go into November, we'll have to kind of relook at this to see if this is a good number, or should it be decreased further. And then the current levy coming off the books of $4.8 million, then the new property levy coming on the books for $4.6. And these are half-years, so looking at the full year in 2026, and of 9.7 and 9.3 for the new levy. of nine point seven and nine point three for the new levy. Moving on to, any questions on revenues before we move on to expenditures? Moving on to expenditures. For fiscal year twenty-five, staffing did increase in the general fund by fifty-one positions, thirty-five of which were moving from the Esther funds to the general fund. And then over the course of the summer, due to staffing and enrollment needs, we needed to add sixteen additional positions in teaching and support, teaching and support staff. And then we also added new guidance council positions, one at the middle school and one at the high school, and then administrative position as well. Healthcare, we've talked about in the spring forecast, no change there. We had a three percent increase, and then the out-years were based on our historical averages of seven percent. And then looking what changed between the May forecast and the September forecast, overall revenues went up, or not, expenditures went up by nine hundred thousand. Personnel for this year was seven hundred and sixty-three thousand. Four hundred and sixty-three was for the new staff. The other three hundred thousand was for the science of reading reimbursement. Insurance benefits, those went down. It's mainly due to the placeholders that I had placed for the new staff. The placeholders, we assume that someone coming on has had the most benefits, which is family benefits. Some took family benefits, others took no benefits, some took single benefits. So there was a savings there. Purchased services increased by one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. That was due to nursing service contract increased by forty thousand. Utilities were up a little bit as well. And then supplies and materials, eighty-eight thousand, and that was due to one-time expenditures for furniture equipment to outfit the mobile units. Expenditures, any questions on expenditures? I can get to the summary tab. So in between these tabs and the summary tabs is a lot of information about each particular line. If anyone wants to see that individually, they'll be there, and I'll have Dan put them on the website as well. All right, so looking at the five-year forecast, the middle line is the, the green line is the current fiscal year, beginning cash carryover fifty-one point three, total revenues of eighty-seven point one. This does not include issue fifty-three, as that is now a new levy, so half of the renewal levy was collected this year, and then the other half, it would pass, would come on the bottom. So if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass, our revenues over expenditures are negative five-point-one, so we'll begin deficit spending. Ending cash balance will be forty-six point two million, and the unencumbered cash is forty-four point two. And then just looking at the first, this first row, looking across, this assumes if issue fifty-three does not pass, and then in this school year, twenty-twenty-eight, that's when the other renewal would fall off. So if the other renewal falls off, we'll be deficit spending at nineteen point three, assuming that we don't do any reductions. This assumes that those levy implications we've talked about, we do nothing between now and then for this purposes. In two thousand and twenty-eight, the other renewal would fall off, so both renewals would be off at that point. We would have unencumbered negative deficit of three hundred thousand. Then in two thousand and twenty-five, we would have a negative deficit of twenty-five point three million. So each year, that deficit increases, and yes, we had a cash balance and it's spent down. That's how quickly it can go. The next line shows if only the renewal passes. So if only the renewal passes, and the renewal in two years, then in fiscal year twenty-eight, instead of a negative three hundred thousand, we would have three point nine million. And then in two thousand and twenty-nine, instead of a negative twenty-five million, we would have a negative twelve point six. Then the bottom line shows if both issue fifty-three and the renewal in a couple of years, if they both pass, we would still be deficit spending, but we would still be sustainable over the life of the forecast and also meeting our cash balance policy in the fifth year.
Any questions for George? So the one thing I want to highlight is this summary page does a really nice job of just looking at dollars and cents, does a really nice job. You can go to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-nine, which is not that far away, but it's a reasonable target, and you can quickly see what happens based on the new levy, based on the renewal levy, and what the consequences financially are for those decisions. But the thing that it doesn't highlight is that none of these scenarios are discussing an increase in taxes. They're all discussing maintaining our tax rates and, in fact, reducing our tax rate if issue fifty-three passes compared to the levy that the board chose to let expire. And I think that's an important point to be aware of. To make sure that this district is in a healthy financial condition in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-nine does not require an increase in taxes. It requires maintaining the current investment of our taxes, and, in fact, it requires us to choose to pay a little less compared to the previous renewal. Thank you, George.
Thanks. And that concludes my report.
Any other questions for George? Moving on, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Iba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Just a couple items for your consideration. First, be resolved upon my recommendation that the Board of Education approves Great Lakes Biomedical LLC to administer student drug testing at a rate of nineteen dollars per test. Secondly, be resolved upon my recommendation that the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar be revised in order to move high school commencement from Sunday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, to Thursday, May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. So just to give some context to that, because of the school calendar, if we would have started during our normal cadence of the past few years, we would have been having kids report to school on August twelfth or thirteenth. That was way too early, so we started on August nineteenth, which meant to get the number of days that we needed, we had to go the week beyond Memorial Day, which is the first time we've done that in a while. And when you do that, that puts commencement back on Memorial Day weekend, which is difficult due to family travel plans and a variety of other things. So starting last year, we began talking about the idea of, there's a lot of neighboring schools that do it during the week. It alleviates the commencement on the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, and it also alleviates the fact that we're doing it as the day is heating up, and usually the evenings are starting to cool down. So temperature, environment, staying off of a holiday weekend, those were all the considerations. And based on my discussions with Bill, we both felt like this was a good concept to consider and put it up for your consideration on the consent agenda today. So those are my two items unless there's any further discussion or questions.
And the only clarification is this Thursday will be a evening graduation.
Yes, it will be an evening graduation, yes. All right, with that, I'll ask Steve to come up with the business service report.
Good evening, everyone. Just one item in the business services section, the gifts to the district. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following gifts be approved. Saint Joseph Church Ministry of Assistance donated seventeen thirty-dollar Target gift cards at a total value of five hundred and ten dollars to Whitney Elementary Schools to benefit students in need. DQ Grill and Chill donated eighty-five Blizzard certificates at a total value of four hundred and fifty dollars to be used for summer reading incentives at Strongsville Middle School. Chloe Nelson donated thirty-six books at a total value of one hundred and fifty-five dollars to the Kinsner Elementary School Library. The Solico family donated twenty-three books at a total value of sixty-five dollars to the Kinsner Elementary School Library. The Books-A-Million Store at South Park Mall donated seven bins of books, including titles for pre-K through twelfth grade, at a total value of three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, to be divided among the schools in the district, and the donation was a result of their annual in-store book drive.
Thank you, Steve. And for the curriculum report, we're going to bring up Nicole Hackman to give her first-ever curriculum report.
Good evening. We have eight items for your consideration. The first three revolve around field placement and affiliation agreements. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that a field placement affiliation agreement between Grand Canyon University and the Strongsville City Schools be approved as presented. We have another item, too, is an agreement with Walden University and the Strongsville City School District. And the third is a student affiliation placement agreement with Eastern Washington University and the Strongsville City Schools. Our next two involve placements. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following student, or that student teachers be placed. We have a student teacher being placed at Kinsner Elementary School. The following item is the placement of a school psychologist for a practicum experience at both the middle school and Surrar under Amy Hoffman. Those are those two items. The next two are resolutions regarding hockey field trips, overnight field trips. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the permission be granted to the Strongsville varsity hockey team to travel to Slovenia to participate in preseason scrimmages, November ninth and tenth. Transportation is going to be paid, handled by parents, and lodging and meals will be paid for by the Strongsville Hockey Parent Association. Item seven, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that permission be granted to the hockey team to travel to Columbus for the Chiller Thanksgiving Classic Hockey Tournament, November twenty-ninth through December first. The tournament fee of twelve hundred dollars will be paid by the district. Again, transportation will be handled by the parents and lodging and meals by participating students. Our last item is biology fees. This is a revision to the May twenty-third agenda in the Superintendent's Report for this year. The biology fee was reduced sixteen dollars due to the book that the students were purchasing being out of print. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Mr. Robert, Dr. Robert, real quick. Item seven, I just saw a typo. The athletic, it said oh-three athletic fund, it should be three hundred, so I'm just going to go in the agenda and correct it.
Did anyone have any questions for Nicole? Do you have a scouting report on the hockey team?
We have nothing on our student services, so I'll turn it over to Ryan for the Human
Thank you, Dr. Iba. Good evening, board members. Under Human Resources, I have the following recommendations for your consideration. Item one, resignations, certificated. Item two, appointments, non-certificated. Item three, appointments, certificated supplemental contracts, prorated. Item four, appointments, non-certificated supplemental contracts, prorated. Item five, appointments, certificated substitutes. Item six, appointments, non-certificated substitutes. Item seven, appointments, home instruction tutors. Item eight, changes in hours, non-certificated. Item nine, changes in status, non-certificated. Item ten, contract recommendation, certificated continuing contract. Item eleven, educational and experience upgrades. Item twelve, stipend instructional coach. Item thirteen, stipend resident educator, year-two facilitator. Item fourteen, stipends, resident educator mentors. Item fifteen, volunteers chaperones. Item sixteen, volunteer coach. Item seventeen, leaves of absence, certificated. Item eighteen, leaves of absence, non-certificated. Item nineteen, unpaid leave, certificated. Item twenty, unpaid leaves, non-certificated. Item twenty-one, memorandum of understanding. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Strongsville Education Association, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted, and this item requires a vote.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Gilbane. Any discussion?
Jenny worked on this one, so I'll have her give an update on what it is.
Yes, so this is the, last year, we had something very similar in place, and it is allowing us to partner with the Strongsville Education Association to employ long-term substitute teachers for the year, and the board allowed approval for fifteen of them this year, which we are already utilizing quite a bit. And so what it does is we've increased the rate, so the change is we've increased the rate to fifty-three percent of the base for these substitutes, and I think we still have a few more to hire, I believe, Ryan.
Yeah, we have four coming in a week from tomorrow. So that should give us probably eight or nine.
Yeah, so it takes us just a little bit longer to get these permanent substitutes because we definitely want them licensed in the different areas. So we employ so many at the elementary, most of them are elementary, and then some, I think six or so go to middle school and high school. But we definitely want certified teachers, and so some of them fill in for long-term leaves, like FMLA leaves, and then some are just used day-to-day. So it's a huge help for us to continue professional development and continue just training on a regular basis, the trainings we need to do, as well as Ames Web Testing is a huge component, and then looking at the results of those meetings and teachers are able to collaborate together and have those discussions. So it's very, although it's, you know, fifteen substitutes, they do a lot of great work for us and allow us to keep moving forward.
Finally, item twenty-two, memorandum of understanding. Oh, I'm sorry.
You're running too fast.
Any other questions, comments? I just want to thank the union for their collaboration on this. In my mind, this is a consequence of the post-pandemic and being able to balance getting enough staff, and I don't think I need to explain it to anyone in the community, getting staff, whether it's in a restaurant, whether it's in a department store or in a school district, it's a challenge, and this is one way we address that. George, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
Yes.
And the motion carries. Now you're back up.
Okay, good. All right. We're going to try this again. Here we go. Item number twenty-two, memorandum of understanding. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Strongsville Education Association, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted, and this also requires a vote.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Gilbane. Any discussion? I think it's back to Jenny.
Sure. So this is exciting. You know, as we negotiated the last teacher's contract, one of the things that was put into place is to have an annual review of our supplementals. We did this last time in bargaining, and there was just a lot of antiquated language in our supplementals, and so we've really updated it and we want to keep it updated. And so what we do at the, around the end of the year is we look to see if there are any other supplementals that we want to recommend to the board. And you all graciously approved a high school drum line instructor for our marching band, so that's in place now. Our high school has been really developing this unified sports program, which has been amazing. Our middle school is also doing it, but high school's taken a little step further and they have practices, and so that's what this supplemental is for. And finally, we brought back rokappa at the high school as well. So again, just three new supplementals for our students, more opportunities for them. So thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? I will highlight that these are the kinds of things that we've been able to do because we are in the best financial position we can be or have been for the last number of years, and these are the kinds of things that it would be a consequence of. We can continue them if issue fifty-three passes, and we would look at eliminating them if issue fifty-three fails. Any other discussion? Please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Do you have a scouting report on the hockey team?
I do not, but if you want to go down the road of any other sports, I'd be glad to help you.
I'll follow up with you.
Okay, wonderful. I look forward to that.
Lastly, we have Dave with the technology report.
Hello, I have one item for you to consider tonight. It's the technology upgrades, the PC refresh project for phase three. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves phase three of the PC refresh project to replace up to 150 outdated teacher PCs with updated Windows 11 PCs, or 11 ready PCs, compatible monitors, and cabling. The cost of phase three should not exceed $116,931.
And this would wrap it all up, right?
Correct. This will be the third and final phase. Phase one was the elementary schools, phase two was the high school, and now phase three will be the middle school. Our average age of a device in there is nine years, and almost none of them are compatible with the mandatory Windows 11 upgrade that's coming out in October of next year.
Questions for Dave?
To be clear, it's not the final upgrade, final, it's the final in the-
Security updates.
-in the three phases, but we will be doing this again eventually.
Correct.
They don't last forever. And then I just wanted to be clear, the not to exceed, if we reduce the number of PCs that we needed, that would reduce the amount that we would spend. Very good.
Thank you, Dave. And that concludes my report as well.
Report on Polaris Career Center, Mrs. Bissell.
Mrs. Housel.
Mrs. Housel.
I'm going to take a stab at it. Yeah, Polaris, we've been busy. Today, they actually started construction on our ERA addition. It also came out this week that Polaris was awarded the five-star, five out of five for career tech, and we've been actively working on finding a new superintendent to replace District Timmons when he retires at the end of the year. And that concludes our report.
I thought that was an excellent report.
What does Mrs. Bissell think of the report?
Next is report on legislation. I will have a quick report in the interest of time. We have an election coming up on November 5th. If you've never voted before, register to vote. If you've voted before, vote. And that concludes my report. Board liaison reports. Do we have a city council update, Mrs. Housel?
I will do a short and sweet one of those for you as well. We had a meeting this past Monday. The mayor had a very nice tribute to the recently passed Mr. Kalinic Senior, who passed away last Saturday, September 14th. He was a pillar of our community. If you hadn't met him, I've heard amazing things about him, just Chamber of Commerce, Southwest General Board. If there was a committee, he was one of the first ones to volunteer for it. So just want to send respects out to his family, and if we could all, you know, keep him, keep the family in our thoughts and prayers. Mr. Miko did a great job at public comments, standing up and talking about our district, and how we also have received the five stars, letting council know all the great things that we have been working on. And last but not least, I know everybody's been waiting, the Erfeld Bridge has reopened. So if you're using that as a cut through through the metro parks, it is open and it looks beautiful. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Housel. Board liaison reports. Do we just want to start with Ms. Stavcek and move our way down?
Which one is she going to do?
Whichever she would like to do.
Do you want to do business advisory?
I do do business advisory.
All right.
We had business advisory this last Friday at 7:30 a.m. here. The major goal of our discussion was to gain an understanding of what students should be expected to know and do in order to be prepared for the junior and senior year experiences of the career pathway. We broke into groups, we talked about things that we couldn't, we shouldn't assume that kids know, or things that we should teach them so that they could be successful. This is the fourth year of this organization, and I want to say, they said there was 21 students currently involved in it. So we had a lot of new members that were interested in joining, a lot of new members who were there. If anyone is interested in joining, let us know, let Dr. Raba know, and we have really great things planned for this year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Oh, and our next meeting is November 8th, I believe, at 7:30.
Correct. Mrs. Gilbane, do you have any, do you have a PTA?
I do have a PTA. I also have, I think we skipped over it, Strongsville Education Foundation. And really, the only thing I want to reiterate is they have Casino Night on November 23rd, so look them up, and you can get tickets online, or you can be a sponsor. It's at the Rec Center. Last year, I was unable to go, but a lot of people said they had a really good time. And these guys do like a ton of stuff for our kids. Field trips to, well, what we just, they just gifted people, we just voted on it tonight. So they're always doing things for our kids. They work really hard, no one pays them, they're all volunteers. So if you're not doing anything on November 23rd, look them up, get some tickets, and join Casino Night. And then I have PTA, which, here, let me look, so I don't get it wrong. Hold on, I'm coming. They did, PTA, September 5th was a long meeting because they did a special installation of all the new positions. Jenny Pelco spoke on the beginning of the school year, which she felt was one of the best beginnings that we have had. Lauren Scott, our new gifted coordinator, spoke on her job and how the state is involved in recognizing what children, when they're tested, and how they're tested, and who gets in the program. And I think that was, that was pretty much it. They also made a resolution by the PTA that they are in approval of our school levy, which was nice. They also have $9,000 for grants. Teachers from all schools can apply for these grants. So if you're listening out there, make sure you apply. And then some of this stuff has already happened. There's a meet and greet on October 28th. That's for Halloween. Tables will be set up by the PTA. And also, the Strongsville Dare people were there. And these are just quick ones coming up. Halloween Party is October 10th for fifth and sixth graders. On October 11th, it's for seventh and eighth graders. And there's an ice skating party November 26th. I won't go on because a lot of them are later on in the year, and you'll forget anyway. But, but anyway. So if you're interested in a Halloween Party, October 10th for fifth and sixth, October 11th for seventh and eighth, you can look it up online, you can get tickets. And I think that concludes the PTA.
Thank you. Sharon? I'll take facilities. Our next meeting is November 19th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in this building. Laura?
Nope, I, I think it's Michelle, Finance and Policy. The policy committee meeting is to be determined, and the finance committee meeting did, the finance committee did meet on September 10th. Unfortunately, I had a conflict with Polaris, so someone filled in for me. Richard?
I filled in.
And Sharon was here, so was Sharon.
I was there too, but if you understood everything that went on, Rich, you're much better at that than I, or I can go over. I did write notes, George, I want you to know.
In the interest of time, I will suggest that George did a great job of reviewing the five-year forecast and the implications on issue 53, and that always leads into our five-year forecast, so it's a good foundation. And I want to just thank the members of that committee for attending the meeting. Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we are at the adoption of consent calendar. Motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented or amended. Action by the Board of Education, an adoption of consent calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda, denoted as type action consent, which are the consent calendar, are adopted as one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Gilbane. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Superintendent timely information. Cameron?
Thank you. A couple highlights as we go around the district. First of all, as the board knows, last year, Aaron and the team recommended CKLA to be our new ELA curriculum. And so we've got pilots going on right now, and we've got teachers that are collaborating across the district. So in third grade, Mrs. Hobie from Murawski and Mrs. Byloski from Surrar collaborated on a writing lesson. They read The Wind in the Willows. The kids, as you can see through some of the pictures there, created their own stories, developed an understanding of the writing process, whether it be editing, revising, or giving feedback. And then they had a class activity where they participated in a tea party.
That was today.
That was today?
At Surrar.
All right, well, Tea Party today, where they were working on publishing and illustrating this work. So I know Aaron, probably throughout the year, will talk more about CKLA, and, you know, we met, I lose track of time, so I think last week, but just really, she's really excited about what's happening. She's out in the building, seeing what's happening with CKLA. And I've had the opportunity, where I've been in the buildings, to talk to some teachers, and they are extremely positive about the impact it's having as well. So just a great example of what's happening already with the program. If we go to the middle school, recently, thank you to all of our community parents that took a large group of sixth graders to Camp Wynoah. I think it was last weekend that they were there. But we also have a good number of students that stayed back. So a handful of years ago, Ms. Myers, who's one of our sixth grade ELA teachers, developed a PBL, where kids could design the, you know, in-house sixth grade camp. So they had a presentation last year, Camp Empowered was the one that was selected. And, you know, they did, whether you could see it's making t-shirts, or face painting, or I know they were making frames. I was, had the opportunity to be over there on Friday when they were going through it. So a great opportunity for the kids, that was run by the kids. And last year was the first year that they did it, and now that group of seventh graders is helping to support the sixth graders in working through it, and so on and so forth. So a great event for all kids, whether going to camp or staying for an in-house camp. It was a great experience for everybody involved. And then finally, at the high school, Mr. Jenkins, who you know, does our musicals, our plays, is an English teacher, he has really built up our theater program. And so his intermediate theater class, we're working on two-person scenes. The kids had to construct an entire scene, write a script, memorize it. They had to talk about where the actors were going to be positioned, entrances and exits. They were also learning the importance of voice and how their vocal, you know, style would impact the scene. And so they were experiencing with, experimenting with that as they plan their two-person plays. And usually in the fall, around this time, right, October-ish, there's usually a little small production of a one-act play, or some of the classes will go on, and then they usually have, they'll have an official fall play and a musical throughout the year. So great job to the kids, and thanks to Mr. Jenkins for continuing to develop our theater program. And as we wrap up with some updates around the district, as was shared, just a shout out to everybody, our staff, our administrators, our teachers, and our parents and community. Second year in a row that we've got a five-star rating, which is the highest that you can get as a district. The buildings also did exceptionally well, and only 68 school districts in the entire state have done that, and a smaller number, obviously, in the county. And so as you could see there, our buildings, the hall have exceeded expectations. High school had hit the significantly exceeds as well. So again, it's a testament to the work of the people. It's also a testament to the work of investing in our district over the last five years, and seeing these consistent results, whether it be in the athletics or opportunities, or all the things that Mr. Miko read off, as well as George gave a big number for staffing, right? And that big number goes into actually helping and providing the support for our kids wherever they are at, whether it's students that are gifted and talented, to students that need, are on an individualized education plan, and everybody in between. So we have that level of support at all levels, and this is the success that we realized because of it. And Amy, I'm sorry, Nicole and Aaron will be back in October 9th at the work session to share an update on, a little more detail on the report card, and so we'll get into more details at that time. We've got parent-teacher conferences coming up in October, so just, I put in my last parent update, but October 3rd, there's no school for kids. Staff will be here from 11:30 to 7:30 for conferences, and that's for the entire district. And then we've got our evening sessions in some of the weeks that are listed there for elementary and secondary. And again, as was in my parent update, the huddle, the new huddle system that Dave presented on a handful of times last year, the paywall will go into effect on October 7th. So at that time, to see our athletic events, you will have to pay for that. And as we talked about, single games or season passes are available, and those season passes get you just that, a season pass to that entire season.
How do you get it? Do you just go to like the Strongsville page? Is it somewhere, is there a, how do you connect to?
Yeah, so it's, you know, Dan was nice enough to put it on the slide for us there, so it's fan.huddle.com, and you search for SHS, or you could download the app. And shortly, we'll be adding the middle school feeds here as well. So download the app, go to that website, and you can log on and watch from home.
Okay.
Especially if it's like a monsoon like it was a couple weeks ago, you could curl up and hang out at home and watch whatever, watch the sport, watch the football game. And that concludes my timely information.
I'm going to piggyback off of timely information, and we'll start by thanking the students for doing a good job taking those tests and performing so well, and showing, showing not just the state, but our community, our parents, all the things they've learned, and how well they're performing. So we're very proud of them. And speaking of the students, we had a parade today, and it was, it was just lovely. You know, we haven't had the parade, the homecoming parade through the, through the Chamber of Commerce for a number of years, and so it was kind of, for me, just fun to have a parade again, and to see everybody, and to see all of our younger kids in the community practicing for Halloween, is one way to describe it, as they had their bags out and were collecting their candy. But I did want to take the time to just give a shout-out. It was a Strongsville High School student-planned and sponsored event. That doesn't mean there weren't a lot of adults who helped at the high school. I know Principal Wengler helped quite a bit. I know Katie Drake did a great job shepherding our students. There were a lot of people involved that I just wanted to give a thank you to all of them. And then I think, Cameron, we had some sponsors that helped with the dollars and cents that make these things happen.
Yeah, we did. So special thanks to our partners, first of all, Febrezi Trucking and Paving, Serpentine Chevrolet, Spencer Vargo, the Quanis Club of Strongsville, Sergeant Clean Car Wash, BA Sweetie Candy Company, Jim Carbone, as well as Buckeye Speech Path. So again, longstanding partners of our school district, and appreciate their support for this first and annual event.
And as I pointed out to Principal Wengler, I am sure we're all excited to have this annual parade every five years. But thank you to everyone, thank you to everyone who, who did the work in planning it and making it happen, and thank you to everybody who came and watched the parade, because it's really boring if no one shows up. But it was a, it was a-
There was a lot of people.
Yeah.
It was a lovely event, and congratulations to all. Next on our agenda is?
I have one more.
Oh, you have another timely information. Go ahead.
Yes, just very quickly, those of you who've been waiting for the town center to open, that ribbon cutting is next Wednesday at 1:15 p.m. That would be October 2nd. And then in the evening, for those of you that have kids in school, but they want to enjoy the new playground, they're having a special event in the evening. It runs from like 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. So come check it out. I'm eager to see it. I know my kids are too. I know my kids are too. So we'll see you there.
I have two things. A thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for having us at that luncheon last week. On Tuesday, 17th, the school board was invited, along with city council. We found out that the O in Richard Omiggo stands for Issue 53.
That is my middle name.
That's what we found out there. And also, talking about Halloween piggybacking, the Rotary Club is going to be hosting Halloween at Safety Town on Saturday, October 12th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and that is for kindergarten and first graders at St. Joseph and John and Strongsville Schools.
Any other timely information and/or Board of Education others?
I just wanted to say, I was at Surrar the other day, and I saw our mobile units. And I just want to thank the people there for decorating them so nice. I don't know if anyone's seen them. Maybe Michelle is, because she's there. But it was really, it was cute how they did it. So they're trying to make it as, you know, homey as possible for the kids, and they seem like, the only thing I want to say, and we can talk about it later on, is I worry about when winter comes, the getting up and down these ramps, if they get icy or whatever. There was a child on crutches, and she slipped already. So I'm just saying, maybe it's something that we just need to think about. You know, we put a rug there, I don't know what.
Are you volunteering to salt them all?
Yeah, I'll get up every morning and do it. But anyway, they did a really good job. I haven't been to the other ones, but those were very cute, so.
Excellent. Any other others? Hearing none, meaning notification. A regular Board of Education meeting will be held Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in this room. A regular Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, October 24th, 7:00 p.m. in this room. And a November regular Board of Education meeting date has been changed. So mark your calendars. It is no longer Thursday, November 21st. It is now Wednesday, November 20th. The time and location remain the same, 7:00 p.m. in the admin meeting room, which is this room. We do have need for executive session on the topics of...
To prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or the terms and conditions of their employment, and to consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Gilbain. Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?[1770.11]